Thank you. Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of City Council for Wednesday, January 24, 2023. I have a meeting announcement. All meetings are live streamed on the City Channel, Pittsburgh's YouTube channel. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Here.
Ms. Gross.
Here.
Mr. Kraus.
Here.
Mr. Lavelle.
What time is it?
Mrs. Strasburger.
Here.
Ms. Warwick.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Here.
Seven members present.
Thank you. As we join from our remote locations and in person, if you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing if you're able to. Please, during the moment of silence, please keep Sam Palamini, the past president of Sharon Community Council, who's done a lot for the community and for the city, in your thoughts, and also Heather Howard, who used to work for Mayor Ravenstall. She's a member of Trinity AME Zion Church and has just done a ton of work across the city of Pittsburgh. She passed away this weekend. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Please be seated. Our next order of business is to amend the agenda. Is there a motion to amend the agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Agenda is amended. Thank you. And our next order of business is proclamations, and I have one from Councilwoman Strasburger to be presented. Read? Okay. I just see present. To be read, Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Strasburger presents, be it further resolved that the council declares Wednesday, January 25, 2023, to be WQED FM Day in the city of Pittsburgh.
Thank you. Is there a motion in a second? Motion to approve in a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any discussion, Councilwoman?
No, thank you.
Proclamation is approved. Thank you. And our next order of business is public comment, and I would like to remind everyone that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation, which are or may be before City Council. Threats and profanity will not be permitted. May we have the first registered speaker, please? And I have the first registered speaker as Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller. Dr. Miller?
Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller, Belsuver, Marillo, Texas, Langzhu, China, Global Intelligence Global Intelligence Society, U.S. National Candidate for President, 2024. Optimal information and intelligence nexus and vote-by-voter verification governance is key to what I do. February 2023 upcoming is Asian Intelligence Month, sponsored by the GIS. I and the GIS are seeking a link with the Yellow River Basin link between China and Europe in Langzhu. Infrastructure is a concern of council. Asia is a concern of council. Monterey Park must be a concern of council. Wuhan Sister City must be a concern of this council, although none of you seem to recognize that. Infrastructure agenda items, many of them, infrastructure has to do with super material and material connectivities. Yellow is one of three major colors valued by the Zhenren Chinese. Yellow symbolizes power in China, and it requires understanding a tale of two yellows. Huanghai, Yellow Basin River, is at the heart of Jin, of Chinese civilization. The Huangdi, Zhuanwan, Yellow Emperor, 2711 to 2599 BCE, so the story goes. Yellow Emperor's mother, Fubao, conceived him via a yellow ray of light in the star constellation Baidu Jijin. So he and Jimu and Danhu were god incarnates, like Jesus, believed to be founders of China, Japan, and Korea. The Yellow Emperor established a unified China, also established a basis for unified language structure in China. Now, yellowness is a Chinese cognitive cultural template that influences contemporary Chinese information systems and intelligence. My question to you is very, very important. China is in trouble, and we need to be able to help China, Chinese in this city as well. Is Xi Jinping functioning as the new Yellow Emperor?
Renee Wilson? Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. Yeah, Renee Wilson, come forward. I called you, and you're here. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Renee Wilson. I reside in the Hill District of Pittsburgh. I'm here in front of council today to talk about some of the developing projects that are going on in the Hill that the community doesn't have a grasp of what's going on because there's no uniform meeting that the councilperson or the city is doing to inform the citizens who's going to be affected by these developments, either by way of not being able to afford to stay in their housing or anything like that. Each and every last one of y'all were elected, and during election time, for our voters who vote in each and every election, we make sure there's flyers sent out to them, we make sure there's rads to the polls and things like that, something that's going to affect them, like housing, can they afford to stay in their housing and things like that. It has to be just important as voting people in. We need to do better about getting this information out. I was on Zoom with the Planning Commission meeting for the Hill. They dropped 101 pages there that we have never seen, and they wanted to make a vote today on the hearing. They gave us two weeks. The same thing happened when it was time for the store, when we were going to find another store to replace Shop &amp; Save. They gave us 10 days, which is impossible. We were community groups. We don't have the resources the city do, the council do, to get these words out. They didn't even mail anything out to these people. Pittsburgh is facing a big homeless problem right now in the city, and if you continue to work like this and don't allow the community to know what's going on, that's what's going to happen again. So people who cannot afford to stay there are going to have to leave. They're going to have to leave. I noticed that you have on your agenda the vacate Wiley. We don't even know about that. We don't know how that's going to affect us. We have the right as citizens of the city to be informed, and you as elected officials have a job to make sure that we are informed. So I'm asking that all of this stuff be held until there is a meeting in the community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And our next registered speaker is Naomi Mullen. Naomi?
Here.
Good morning.
Shady Trees, Not Shady Deals, and Bon Air. This is for you, Michael. The Bon Air Elementary School Building was once a shining example of what a city public school could be. Instead, the Pittsburgh Public School Board has chosen to squander the building. The residents at the time that it was constructed did not want or approve of anything but a school to exist there. We, the property owners, taxpayers, voters, and caretakers of our neighborhoods, are the real stakeholders here. We say, take it down. According to the Pennsylvania Constitution, the purpose of government is for the peace, safety, and happiness of the people. They serve. The Bon Air Memorial Green Space is the solution for the peace, safety, and happiness of the Bon Air community. Without that, there is no valid governance. This was read at my husband's funeral. Michael J. Mullen Reflection by Battalion Chief Douglas Praskovich. Retired Deputy Chief Mike Mullen touched the lives of many people. His uncompromising dedication to his sworn duty to provide for the safety of the citizens of Pittsburgh was truly exceptional and one that should be emulated by every firefighter. He loved sharing his knowledge of firefighting in all its many aspects to make our firefighters safer, smarter, and more efficient on the fire ground. Mike knew most of the firefighters on the entire Pittsburgh Bureau of Fire by their first name and was always approachable regardless of rank. If you had a question, he would stop what he was doing to answer it. He worked tirelessly but also energetically his entire career in pursuit of more knowledge. His legacy will serve our citizens and firefighters for years to come. Michael J. Mullen lived a full life as his obituary so accurately described. Mike was passionate, tireless, dedicated, highly conscientious, and caring. Well done, Michael. Well done. Rest in peace, my friend. We do not consent to a detrimental building remaining to decay the community we have built and maintained. Former Mayor Paduto was defeated and left in disgrace. He appointed a panel that claimed the Bon Air Elementary School Building should remain. We, the people of Bon Air, have driven past former school buildings and heard the stories of defecation in the hallways and criminal acts in and around those buildings. We, the people, say no to any use of the school except to be torn down and become a green space. Join our supporters, Mayor Gany, Councilman Coghill, and State Representative Venom, for the creation of a green space. The Memorial Green Space is the solution for the peace, safety, and happiness of our community. Shady Trees, Not Shady Deals.
Thank you. And our next registered speaker is Ikona Halmackina.
Reading from good day, the City Council. My title is Ikona Halmackina. I am the Grand Inca of the Air Force Confederacy, a fervor to the American people, and I would like to lend my voice to the subject of how you're looking to use the American Rescue Plan funds. Today, you'll be voting on whether or not to utilize those funds for medical expenses or medical bills for people. I would caution you not to do so because the American Rescue Plan was not a bailout, meant to be a bailout for corporate entities such as the healthcare industry, who's already one of the top earners in this region. I would employ you, however, to utilize those funds where they're needed. People need food, people need shelter, and people need the ability to pay for these enormous utilities. I would think that you would, I would ask that you would reconsider using these funds to bail out healthcare industry. Thank you for your time, and I hope that you will use those funds wisely. I yield the floor.
Thank you. Have a good day. And Michelle McMillan? Is Carmen Brown on? She's not in the audience, I know. And then the last registered speaker is, and I hope I say this correctly, if not, please correct me when you get on, Atonti Keen Sheab. On? No, not on. Okay. So that exhausts our list of registered speakers. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak?
I made it just in time.
Good morning, Ms. Brown.
My name is Yvonne F. Brown. I live in the Hill District. And we just had the Speaker Renee that speaks, that came and spoke, which I had told her that she needed to come down here plenty times before. She speaks very well. She lives in the building that we live in. She knows a little bit about politics, and we've been trying to get her really to help us because I want her to understand that when Mr. Lavelle and Ms. Harris, when she was also president of council, them two worked together. Okay, so he had, Mrs. Harris had, three meetings in one month, three, and it was supposed, we were supposed to have a meeting, and they scheduled it on holiday, so we didn't even have a month that, we didn't even have a meeting in a month. I come down, and it's really bothering me. I keep coming, and I really have started praying and asking God to calm my spirit when I come in here because you just have put a damper on me coming here. You've got me so that even I'm hollering at the homeless men, and I know, I love the homeless men because I know they can't help themselves. There's a man, Hammer. If any of you, the homeless people, if you see Hammer, tell him I'm worried about him, and if he could, could please come to City Council and please let me know that he's okay because he wanted to die. He told me, when I said, "Come to City Council," he said, "No." He said that he wanted to die. He said he tried to kill himself. He went to the hospital. They let him out. He went over to the shelter, but he started crying. He said, "He came in, he came late. He asked for some food." And then he said, "They locked me up." And he was crying like a baby. See, you just all think that these shelters is doing what they're supposed to do, but if they don't, the people don't come and tell you, you'll never know. I want you to understand that I come because I'm trying to fight for the people. I'm fighting for my granddaughter, who we have the black councilmen say that she has no business down here. When I told the governor, I have this picture, they have this sign for my grandchildren to learn how to fight for their rights, and he said, "I understand, Ms. Brown." But we got a councilman, a black man, to tell me my black child has no business coming down here speaking, and that really bothers me because I try to teach her to have some self-esteem, that you are a human being and you are to be loved, not mistreated. And anytime that I can come down and say, "We need a bus or a ride," transportation to get to the bottom of the Hill for the seniors, and we have Mr. Walton, our councilman, and says, "No, nobody can come and tell me." The hidden agenda, she has to hit, you know what my hidden agenda is? I got a ride. My daughter takes me everywhere, but for the blind, the cripple, and the handicapped, I'm the only one fighting for them.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Are there any further speakers wishing to address City Council in the audience? Any further speakers? Seeing no further speakers, we'll now move on to the next order of business, which is the presentation of papers. And we'll begin with Councilman Reverend Ricky Burgess, Chair of Human Resources.
Learn new papers.
Thank you, Councilman. And Councilman Coghill, Chair of Public Works and Infrastructure.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 1144, Resolution Granting a Vacation of Unopened Portions of Haberman Avenue in Palmetto Way, laid out in the McLean and Maples First Plan of Belsuver, as recorded in PBV in the 18th Ward, 3rd Council District of the City, Bill 1145. Resolution granting a vacation of an unopened 10-foot alley known as Nashville Way, as recorded in a plan of Ross Common in Plan Book Volume 2, Page 30, and also in the amended plan of Glenwood, recorded in Plan Book Volume 3, Page 269, in the Department of Real Estate of Allegheny County in the 15th Ward, 5th Council District. Bill 1146, Resolution granting under Springway Center LLC, their successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense a new shallow vault, 28 to 30 inches deep with solid concrete lid, at 2330 Penn Avenue in the 2nd Ward, 7th Council District. Bill Number 1147, Resolution granting a vacation of a portion of Wiley Avenue laid out in the Lower Hill Plan Development District Improvement Subdivision Site Plan Number 1, from the intersection of Logan Street to its southwestern terminus in the 3rd Ward, 6th Council District. And Bill 1148, Resolution authorizing, acceptance by the city of Pittsburgh, the dedication of portions of Washington Place and Bedford Avenue in the 3rd Ward, 6th Council District.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 1160, Resolution authorizing the Department of Public Safety and the Office of Community Health and Safety to develop a crisis support program for frontline retail and food service workers in the city of Pittsburgh.
Thank you. And Councilman Kraus, Chair of Public Safety and Wellness. Councilwoman Lavelle for Councilman Kraus. He has no paper.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman. And Councilman Lavelle, Chair of Finance and Law.
Madam President.
Thank you. Oh, I didn't see Councilwoman Gross. I should have called on her.
Councilwoman Lavelle presents Bill Number 1149, Resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of Max Petrunia, PC, in the amount of $30,000 in settlement of litigation filed in the U.S. District Court for the Western District of Pennsylvania. Bill 1150, Resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of Tuckin Arnsberg, PC, in an amount not to exceed $8,933 for professional services for an early neutral evaluation related to litigation in the United States District Court for the Western District of Pennsylvania. Bill 1151, Resolution amending Resolution 260 of 2021, which authorized the mayor and the city solicitor to enter into a professional services agreement with Campbell Durant, PC, for professional legal services and expert advice regarding labor matters by increasing the total spend by $100,000 for a new not-to-exceed amount of $490,000. Bill 1152, Resolution amending Resolution 527 of 2022, which authorized the mayor and the city solicitor on behalf of the city of Pittsburgh to enter into a professional services agreement with Cohen Law Group to address a matter of pending telecommunications litigation by increasing the total spend by $50,000 for a new not-to-exceed amount of $196,050. And Bill 1153, Resolution amending Resolution 458 of 2022, which authorized the mayor and the city solicitor to enter into a professional services agreement with Fisher Phillips for legal services in connection with collective bargaining by increasing the total spend by $250,000 for a new not-to-exceed amount of $300,000.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Strasburger, Chair of Recreation, Youth, and Senior Services.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And Councilwoman Warwick, Chair of Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management and Technology. Thank you, Councilwoman. And Councilman Wilson, Chair of Land Use and Economic Development.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number 1154, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 797 of 2017, effective December 28, 2017, as amended and titled. Resolution adopting and approving the 2018 capital budget and the 2018 Community Development Block Grant Program and the 2018 through 2023 Capital Improvement Program by reducing various organizations by adjusting various line items funded by the Community Development Block Grant in program year 2018 and authorize subsequent agreements. Bill 1155, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 647 of 2020, effective December 23, 2020, as amended and titled. Resolution adopting and approving the 2021 capital budget and the 2021 Community Development Block Grant Program and the 2021 through 2026 Capital Improvement Program by adjusting various line items funded by the Community Development Block Grant in program year 2021 and authorize subsequent agreements. And Bill 1156, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 886 of 2021, effective December 27, 2021, as amended and titled. Resolution adopting and approving the 2022 capital budget and the 2022 Community Development Block Grant Program and the 2022 through 2027 Capital Improvement Program, so as to identify specific public service grant projects in City Council District 5 and authorize a subsequent agreement or agreements for operation administrative expenses, maintenance, purchase of equipment, and/or rehabilitation of neighborhood facilities on behalf of the residents of the city of Pittsburgh.
Thank you. And myself, Chair of Hearings and Policy, I have one resolution and one communication. Please, let's take the resolution first, please.
Council President Kelsmith presents Bill Number 1157, Resolution naming the Lower Herschel Park Field as Danbury Field. And Bill Number 1158, Communication for Mayor Ed Gany Submitting Executive Order 202201, dated November 23, 2022.
Thank you. And the communication, please? Did you read that?
Yes.
I apologize. Can I have a motion to read, receive, and file for the communication, please?
Move.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the communication's approved. And now we'll move on to our unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business before City Council? Seeing none, the next order of business is reports to committee for final action. We'll start with Councilman Lavelle, Committee on Finance and Law. Councilman?
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill Number 1143, Reported a Committee on Finance and Law for January 18, 2023, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 677, Resolution authorizing the mayor, the Office of Management and Budget, the Department of City Planning, the Department of Finance, the Department of Innovation and Performance, Department of Public Works, and the Department of Public Safety and the Housing Authority of the city of Pittsburgh to temporarily address the public health emergency of homelessness in the city of Pittsburgh and to provide for policies and programs to address the lack of affordable housing and there's consequent contribution to chronic homelessness as directed herein until more permanent solutions can be implemented. Bill Number 1073, Resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Office of Management and Budget on behalf of the city of Pittsburgh to enter into an agreement or agreements with a vendor chosen through the city bid process for the purpose of purchasing and discharging eligible healthcare debt owed by Pittsburghers, as approved in the city of Pittsburgh's American Rescue Plan at a cost not to exceed $1 million. And Bill Number 1114, Resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of Brandy Bailey in the amount of $2,608 in settlement of a claim for damage to her parked vehicle near 2055 Raymond Street from a City Public Works vehicle on January 17, 2022.
Thank you. You've heard the reading and the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Councilwoman?
Thank you. I just have a few comments about the bill we discussed last week, 1073, relieving medical debt. We've heard a little bit of comments from public comment, and I've gotten some emails questioning whether the people in the income range, which is $13,590 through $46,630 of income, have, are already medically indigent, meaning that the hospital, the payments hospitals receive for care that becomes uncompensated. And are we just filling in a void that is already filled in by government institutions? And I don't know enough about this topic, right? And so what, my response has been to say that we are definitely, I think, all learning and looking at the examples from other cities, but that this isn't a final action. We're authorizing the administration to kind of dig in and do this work. And so I just wanted the public to know that this doesn't mean that there's, this money is immediately going out the door, and in fact, would have to come back to council for another opportunity for discussion on the details of a contract. So I really value the input, and I know that I'm still trying to learn about this topic, and my staff are doing some research as well, and so this is kind of like the beginning of the discussion, and I just wanted people to understand that. And so we welcome kind of more exploration and discussion about kind of where these dollars should be allocated. Appreciate it. But I'll be voting support today.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Anything, anything from any other members? Seeing none, the bills are now ready for final action. All in favor, the passage of vote, aye, when the name is called. Those opposed, vote no. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
No on 1073. Aye on all remaining bills.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Ms. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
No on 1073. Aye on all other bills.
Nine ayes on Bills 677 and 1114, and seven ayes... Nine ayes on Bill 677 and 1114, and seven ayes and two noes on Bill 1073.
Thank you. The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes. It's finally passed. And that exhausts our list of committees for final action. We'll move on to motions and resolutions. I have meeting announcements this afternoon at 2:30 p.m. Council will hold an executive session on Bill 1115 as it relates to litigation settlements. Tomorrow, Wednesday, January 25, at 10 a.m., Council will hold our standing committees' meeting. Speaker registration will close at 9 a.m. tomorrow morning. To register to speak, please fill out the signup form on the council meeting webpage. You may also call the city clerk's office at 412-255-2138. Also, Wednesday with sessions at 1:00 and 2:15, Council will hold a briefing on the operating budget grants. And I just want to be, make sure the public knows that when we have the executive sessions, those things that occur in the executive session are not to be shared until the time is right. And so with that said, is there anything from the members? Councilwoman?
Thank you, Madam President. I also wanted to raise for council and for the public that there's been a great deal of news about the Roosevelt Building downtown that experienced a fire some weeks ago, and that houses about 100 truly low-income people, very low-income. And there are concerns about the number of evictions that have been happening. The building is not condemned. There are a few, I think, floors that are condemned. And certainly we'll be asking Councilman Lavelle for more details here. But I just wanted to raise this as an example of what I think council has been concerned about for some time, is that the eviction rates across the city is adding to our homelessness crisis, and that we really need to be concerned about how we are supporting tenants through this process. A great number of our residents are tenants and not homeowners, right? I represent neighborhoods that have 65, 70% of the population of large neighborhoods that are renters. And it's a different day out there. 20 years ago, we didn't see the kind of, I would call predatory capital investment from outside of Pittsburgh, buying buildings, flipping buildings, and displacing people. And I don't know what's happening at the Roosevelt Building, but I see it as a symbol, at least, of how our tenants and our city residents are so vulnerable in this legal process. I know that we have begun to fund a kind of renter, or, excuse me, lawyer for the day for renters. Council went through a discussion about, it's almost two years ago now, about evictions and what our authority or ability to do as a city can do to strengthen tenants in the legal process where they are so disadvantaged. And I just wanted to say that we still have a lot of work to do. So I'll wrap it up there, but I just wanted to call attention to the fact that this problem has not gone away. And I do think that we can, we can do better. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Anything else from members? Seeing none, I'm just going to say, I think we all really have a lot of concerns when it comes to the homeless, the violence, and all the things that need immediate interventions, not just preventive programming. And I think that we're having some really good conversations that we should be having. But a lot of us also are doing things in the community without coming to the microphone every weekend saying that we're doing it. We're making sure that people that we know are getting the help that they need. And maybe we need to do a better job at saying what we're doing in the public so the public understands. But overall, I think that, you know, we all have some very similar concerns. And I think how we get to a different place is, we may not always agree. But I do think that we all want to help people. And so I want to thank the members for all the work that they are doing. And there's a lot of different things that we, you know, came onto council to serve, and some of it was, some of the things we're dealing with now are not those things. But they become part of the things that are most important to the community when it affects the people that we serve. So anyway, I just, anything else from members? I just want to say, I think that we'll come up with some solutions on a couple of things. But I also don't want to push us to the end where we're doing what they are in California, where, you know, they did so much. I was just talking to council, our solicitor. And we're housing, they built so much low-income housing that the housing actually went up. And so it actually forced the housing and forced people out of homes. So it's had the opposite effect. So I think we have to have a good, healthy balance and understand what we're doing and not just come in with an agenda, come in with real action items that will have real impact to our residents. Anything else from members? If not, can I have a motion to approve the minutes, adjourn the meeting, or, wait, approve the minutes, excuse the absent member, and adjourn the meeting?
To move.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned. Thank you.